I'm ready.
That whole section to be like not.
No, we don't.
The version existing, right?
Non-included. It's very clear about that.
I would just remember for that.
Talk to me like. Me and Amy met with me about the other one from a few like a couple.
Oh, yes, yes.
Kind of all agree with our.
Yeah, we're gonna get started.
We are ready to go.
Okay, we're ready to get started. Fuck. Under that roll call.
James Williams.
Here.
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 Let's rise for invocation and pledge.
Lord, we ask your guidance today as we consider matters that will affect the safety and welfare of many people in our country coming. Help us listen with open minds to matters that are important before us and to act on those matters that will benefit those who reside in our area. Keep our minds open and alert, our hearts compassionate, and our comments cheerful. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The zoning commission of Palm Beach County has convened at nine AM in the Vista Center, Ken Rogers Hearing Room, 2300 North Jog Road, West Palm Beach, Florida, to consider proposed applications and staff recommendations pursuant to the Palm Beach County Unified Land Development Code. The commission takes final action regarding Class B conditional uses, subdivision variances, and Type II variances, and issues advisory recommendations on other requests. The Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County will conduct a public hearing at 301 North Olive Avenue, West Palm Beach, Florida, in the Jane M. Thompson Memorial Chambers, sixth floor, on applications not subject to zoning commission final action. Zoning hearings are quasi-judicial in nature and must be conducted to afford all parties due process. The Board of County Commissioners has adopted procedures for conduct of quasi-judicial hearings to govern the conduct of such proceedings. The procedures include the following. Any communication with commissioners which occurs outside the public hearing must be fully disclosed at the hearing. Applicants and persons attending the hearing may question commissioners regarding their disclosures. Such questions shall be limited solely to the disclosures made at the hearing or the written communication made a part of the record at the hearing. Any person representing a group or organization must provide documentation that the person representing the group has the actual authority to do so regarding the matter before the commission. Any person who wishes to speak at the hearing will be sworn in and may be subject to cross-examination. The applicant and county staff may cross-examine witnesses. Any other persons attending the hearing may submit cross-examination questions, including follow-up questions to the chair who will conduct the examination. The scope of cross-examination is limited to the facts alleged by the witness in relation to the application. Public comment is encouraged, and all relevant information should be presented to the commission in order that a fair and appropriate decision can be made. Is there proof of publication?
Yes, we have proof.
Motion to receive.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Swearing in.
All those wishing to testify on today's items, please rise and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Next, we'll have approval of minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes of July 3rd, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, we have a few amendments to the agenda, starting with item number six, ZB ABN PDD CA 2024-01273 L self-storage. We do have some modifications to motions. We had an extra motion right after the staff recommendation that is being stricken. Item D for the Class A conditional use, we've added in, it's a recommendation. And item F, the Type II variance, it would be an adoption of a resolution. Amending the staff report, specifically Exhibit B three for the chart for the variance correcting the acreage references, modifying the compliance condition in Exhibit C five to reference the zoning commission. On the regular agenda, B eight CA 2024-01606 Gardens of Pine Ridge. There's a modification to the Class A conditional use specifically in Exhibit C to the engineering condition three A. Item number nine, C A W 2024-018007 at Haverhill. A modification to the Class A conditional use specifically in Exhibit C one to renumber engineering condition six to engineering condition one. Amending the Type II waiver conditions depicted in Exhibit C two, the all petition condition number one, and striking out all petition number two. Modifying Exhibit C two under use limitations one.
Can we have a motion?
A motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Conflicts and recusals. Let's start to my right.
I have none.
None.
I have none.
None.
I have none.
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 Okay, moving right along.
For postponements, withdrawals, and remands, we have three items on this agenda. DOA 2024-00254, ZV SVZ CA 2025-00428, and DOA CA 2024-00499. Each of these three, no motion is necessary, and they are postponed to September 4th, 2025.
Okay, we're ready then for the consent agenda.
Disclosures?
Any disclosures on consent?
No.
No.
None.
Yes, I have number four, Don Hearing, I spoke with, and number seven, Josh Nichols.
Okay, I have none. And we can move forward.
Motion to recommend approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second the motion, but there's just one little thing I have about that, number seven. The tile world. When I added up the three parcel control numbers, it appears that it's 1.07 acres and not .97 acres. I don't know if you want to look into that before it goes any further, but there's three parcel control numbers. It doesn't appear to affect the application because the two parcel control numbers do add up to .62 acres, but the other one is a little different, so I mean, I don't know why.
I think we fixed it in the staff report, but not on the agenda. I think in the staff report, we had revised it to .97.
Okay, it's 1.07 is what I came up.
Whatever the.
Okay.
I don't know, but we will look at it. Thank you.
Oh, thanks. Thank you. Yeah, so I seconded that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, regular agenda. Do we have?
Yeah, so item CA 2024-01606 Garden of Pine Ridge. The request is a Class A conditional use for additional density. Staff is recommending approval. Don't believe we have any cards.
No cards. Any, do we have any disclosures? Sorry, we're gonna do this item by item?
None.
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 Yes, I spoke to Josh Nichols.
Okay, one disclosure.
We really need a.
All right.
We need a presentation?
Would you like a presentation?
Up to the board. Anybody, anybody object to just moving forward?
No, no objection.
Motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Moving on to item nine?
Item nine is C A W 2024-018007 at Haverhill. We have two requests before the board. Class A conditional use for additional density and the Type II waiver to reduce the required parking for an affordable housing project. Would you like to do disclosures?
Any disclosures?
None.
None.
None. None.
I spoke to Meredith Lee.
Okay.
We have another one. We have one presentation with us?
Agent might want to do a presentation, I believe.
Okay.
Yes.
Let's go.
Go ahead.
Good morning. Meredith Lee with Shetson Bowen. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. And I'm here to present today a Class A conditional use and a Type II waiver for the seventh at Haverhill. Our project team is, the applicant is Trey Bell Housing partnering with Proceed Development. This is a partnership between the, these two entities and the property owner, West Palm Beach Seventh, West Palm Beach Baptist Seventh Day Church, who is the property owner. The project before you today is a centrally located mixed-use project. It is a five-story building on the west side of Haverhill Road. The project will include a 5,000 square foot place of worship with 150 seats and 101 multifamily residential units. There's also on the site plan about a half an acre of recreation area. The future land use designation is high residential, eight units an acre. We are seeking to increase the density of the property to allow high residential, 12 units an acre. And the existing zoning district is multifamily, high-density residential. And the area, the property is in a couple of planning areas, the urban redevelopment area, the revitalization and redevelopment infill overlay, as well as the Stacy Street CCRT. The property is located on the, excuse me, the west side of Haverhill Road. It's about half a mile between Belvedere Road and Okeechobee Boulevard. Within a half-mile radius of the site, we have multiple goods and services available. For a half-mile is about a 10-minute walk. Within that radius, we've got three daycares, an elementary school, multiple churches. We've got the Wawa and Emergency Care Center, LA Fitness. And just outside of that half-mile radius, we've got grocery stores, the public library, and fire rescue, and multiple employment opportunities. The property is also, excuse me. The property is also on a bus route, which connects to multiple bus routes north and south of it. We do have a bus stop on our property's frontage. It's Bus Route Four, which connects to the VA. The routes on Okeechobee and Belvedere will take riders to the airport, as well as the multimodal transportation systems in downtown, Tri-Rail, Bright Line, et cetera. So it's got a lot of connectivity. In addition, Haverhill Road does have bike facilities on the road. This is the future land use map of the site. The property has HR eight. It was originally designated HR twelve back in 1989. It did have a future land use change some years later to HR eight at the request of the town of Haverhill. However, changing it back to HR eight would mean it would be contiguous with the densities allowed on the properties adjacent to the west and to the east. This is the zoning map. It's RH. It's not changing. It's RH all around it, so we do have consistency there. The Class A conditional use is a request to allow greater TDRs or transfer development rights, more than two units an acre. That would equate, that would allow the property up to 24 transfer development right units. We are also seeking an affordable housing density bonus in the amount of 93%, which would yield 37 units. Our project, whereas the affordable housing program requires a minimum of 65% of the units be designated at or below 60% of the AMI, our project is offering or to be affordable at 100%, 100% of the units affordable at 60% or below. In 2025, the AMI is $111,000. So at 60% of the AMI, we're talking salaries at $67,000 between 33 and 67. So we're talking first responders, 911 dispatchers, we're talking service industry, those who are now struggling to make ends meet and commuting from Fort Pierce. It is a small drop in a bucket, but it is, it is a meaningful contribution. We are seeking to reduce our parking obligation, however, through a Type II waiver. Earlier this year, the BCC passed an ordinance to allow a reduction, a further reduction in parking for affordable housing projects. It basically mirrors what is currently allowed in the Westgate community. The current standard code requirement is that you have to have one space per student unit or per studio unit and 1.75 spaces per one-bedroom and up. Is to be parked at .25 spaces per unit, which would yield at the standard rate 172 units just for the multifamily. The waiver reduction would allow the one-bedroom and the two-bedroom units to be reduced. So one-bedrooms would be allowed to be parked at one space per unit, and two-bedrooms would be allowed to be parked at 1.5 spaces per unit. The guest parking ratio was also allowed to be reduced to .25, .2 spaces per unit, which would yield a total of 130 spaces under the waiver. Our project is proposing 135 spaces for the multifamily use. So essentially, if you think the guest parking and just apply the regular standard rate, that's what we're doing. The church would be parked at the regular standard code requirement of one space per three seats. And as a side note, the currently approved site plan for this property has a 5,000 approximate square foot church with a clergy house. The parking spaces that are on that site plan is 52 spaces. Two of those spaces would be designated for the clergy house. So we're talking apples to apples when it comes to how we are, how we've assigned the parking count for the church. It's 50 spaces, is what's approved. We're asking or seeking, proposing 50 spaces for the church currently. This is the summary of the project. I've been over most of this, but the waiver would reduce the parking requirement total to 35, by 37 spaces, bringing the total amount of parking spaces on the site plan to 185 spaces. We are meeting the code requirement or for FAR and building coverage. For the AHP program, I mentioned that 65% of the units, minimum requirement at or below 860% of the AMI. However, the code also requires that not more than 20% of the units be affordable at or below, below 30% of the AMI. And we are going to meet that requirement, so the bulk of the units will be at between 30 and 60 percent, yes, 30 and 60% of the AMI. Our unimix, which influences our parking count, is 40 studio apartments, 43 one-bedrooms, and 18 two-bedroom apartments. Our application has a concurrent planning application in process to allow a future land use map change to 12 units an acre. We also had to, in order to get the number of TDRs that we're requesting, we also had to submit for a text amendment to allow up to seven units an acre. This would be specific to 100% or to affordable housing program projects in the URA. And also, we, companion to that would be a text amendment to allow churches with affordable housing on the property to basically have 100% of the density and 100% of the FAR non-residential intensity to be developed on the site. That request was transmitted back in May, and it would be going toward adoption with this application at the end of this month. So I, we believe that the project comes with some community benefits, not only with the affordable housing, but there is a cooperation between the developer and the property owner. The property owner has owned this property for 25 years, and they've wanted to redevelop the site for a long, long time. It's just, it's not been feasible financially. They've got a small congregation now. So this partnership will allow the church to remain on the site in perpetuity as long as they want, to be able to expand the way they have wanted to in the last 25 years, and to stay where they, stay where they have established their home. The property, as I mentioned, is on a bus route, and there's three bus routes within a half a mile walk of the site. Beautification, the property is mostly vacant currently. If you drive by, you wonder why is there nothing there? It was residential for its entire history. But this prop, this project will beautify the property with new landscaping, new lighting, and there will be infrastructure upgrades as well, because with every new project, especially in an area that has aging infrastructure as it is, will be required to upgrade some of the infrastructure to make the project feasible for it, and that has downstream effects for adjacent properties. This is the image of the site plan. And the principal entrance is on the, is on Haverhill Road in the northeast corner. We had to move it up as far out of the turn lane as possible, which is why it's not located more centrally on the, on the property frontage. But that allows the property traffic to circulate around the building. The primary entrance for the residential would be on the north side of the building, with the primary entrance of the church on the south side of the building. And the, you see on the site, there's multiple recreation areas for the residents and their guests. Because there was a TDR involved, the code requires architectural elevations to be submitted, and so we did. The, this is the image of the north facade showing the main residential entrance with, and it's really difficult to see on this, but there is signage on the top of the canopy indicating the entrance for the residential. So it'll have like the project's name up on that canopy, and the address would be, you know, on the wall. Uh oh, did I do something? Thank you. This is the image of the south elevation. The main entrance for the church is highlighted there in yellow with the wall sign announcing its entrance. We also have a secondary entrance for the residential on the south side, since there's parking on all sides of the building. The east and west elevations, the east is the front, and so facing, facing Haverhill Road, we have, you know, different colors in the facades, different materials, and there's proposing a mural. So, and on the east side, on the west side, which would be the rear face of the building, there's the emergency exit or stairwell. With the elevations, a visual impact analysis is also required, so this shows the separation of the building between our setback and the nearest building to the north of our property on the other side of Pine Grove Drive. And it's 175 minimum separation. The, and that's just to the property on the corner of Pine Grove Drive and Haverhill Road. The properties to the west of that property have a greater setback, so there would be even more separation between our project and theirs. And in between, there's a lot of landscaping. What's missing from these images is the landscape buffering that would be proposed to be installed to further screen the views. The section below that is the east-west cross-section, Haverhill Road. The property across the street has two and three-story apartment buildings. The closest building to ours would be 100, or 277 feet away. To the west, there is a one-story, there's a mix of one-story buildings on the property to the west, but the closest building to our proposed structure is 160 feet. The impact analysis, we also presented some rendering, so this would be the view of the property from Haverhill Road approaching from the north, so from the northeast corner. On Pine Grove Drive, as you're driving eastward, this is the prop, the image from the back corner, the northwest corner. And on the sidewalk from Haverhill Road, this is what passersby would see of the property from the southeast. And from the back corner where the recreation pod, we've got the southwest view. Our justification, we provided, we believe we comply with all the standards of the code. I can go through each one in detail, but if you have any questions, I'll be happy to address them individually. The Type II waiver, we also had to address the standards for that as well, and we submitted a parking demand study that said that our parking numbers that we are proposing would meet or exceed the parking, the actual parking demand of this type of development. We also had to submit a parking management plan to establish, you know, what the parking rules would be for this, because we were asking for the waiver. So we submitted that, and staff has conditions of approval to do some minor editing of it. But we worked with staff on how, on what they expected out of that document, and we believe that we, hopefully, we've met their, their threshold for that. And we submitted a tenant agreement, just so that we have, we have a documentation that, which would be presented to prospective tenants that what the parking rules would be and what they could expect when they're on site. We are thankful to have staff's recommendation of approval, and we are in agreement with most of the conditions. However, there are, there's one or, one condition that we have, that I have discussed with the project manager, specifically the architecture condition that has to do with the increase in the number of, increasing the number of balconies that are proposed on the building. I'll have the applicant come up and speak briefly on it, but the code requirement for balconies is a minimum of 20, 20% of the units of a multifamily project are required to have balconies. Our project provides 26%, so it exceeds the minimum code. The condition requires that a minimum of 40% of the units have balconies. This is a 100% affordable project, and so it is, it is a challenge cost-wise to to meet that condition. This is, at an affordable project, the financing structure is different, but we have to build with the same cost of the construction materials as a market-rate project does. So maybe the numbers are not quite as favorable to increasing the cost of the construction upfront. Plus, there's soft costs involved in doing those kinds of modifications as well. I'm gonna ask Danny Murakavitz, who's with Trey Bell Housing, to come and speak on the matter a little bit further, and we'll be happy to answer any more questions after that if you have.
Morning, everyone. Danny Murakavitz, Principal at Trey Bell Housing, part of the development team for this project. As Meredith stated, for this particular request from zoning, I don't want to really go back and forth with staff. Staff has been great with us. This has been a very long journey for this project. It's a different type of project for this area. And all I'll say, as Meredith said, is we are meeting code. We're doing what is written in the code, and if staff and the board in front of me feels that we need more balconies, then that's what we decide. But I just wanted to make the statement that we are at code, and that's kind of where we land. So any questions? I can answer any of the questions.
Commissioners, any questions or comments?
I have a question. So the 40%, to comply with a 40% balcony requirement, what would be the increased cost to, for the project?
Roughly $400,000. We're looking at about $30,000 per balcony to $40,000 per balcony.
Staff, any, any comment on that?
Nope.
Nope, okay.
I can, I'm trying to find the condition right now, because I don't think it's just balconies. So let me find it really quick. Staff's concern on the architecture is that it looks very much like a hotel. We want it to be more residentially oriented, and I believe it is.
And I believe it is... Condition...
Are we going to hear a presentation from staff, Mr. Chair?
Do we need it?
Would you like a presentation?
Oh, okay, so you're...
We don't have anything in addition, other than we can talk about the architecture.
Okay, those are just questions, okay.
And I'm trying to find the condition.
You know the number?
It's 2G.
2D?
2G.
Okay, so the condition says a minimum of 40% of the residential units shall have balconies and/or patios. So none of the ground-floor units have patios either. So it's just the second and third and fourth. And we want the balconies also to be covered. If you'll notice in our elevations, that one of the balconies that they have is just open to the sun and not covered. So they have an ability to add a patio, which would just be switching out the door... A window for a door and concrete on the bottom. So we do believe that there is a need for those additional residential elements to make it look more residentially oriented.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
I get what the cost is as a developer. I can tell you that it's really costly to do the extra balconies. But as Wendy points out, it doesn't cost you much or nothing to cut a window to a door. That's very minimal. And putting some patios on the first level is not going to cost you $400,000. But any exceeding that, I would agree that that's probably... This project doesn't call for spending that kind of money to put a couple balconies in. But if you can just cut in, open a door on those, and put some ground-floor ones in, I think that would help pacify the staff as well as us.
Okay, understood.
I have one other question.
Yes, go ahead.
Just a real quick one. In the staff report, I note that the city, the town of Haverhill, objected to the increase of units from eight to 12. I know it's a planning issue, but is... Has there been any further response? Is there still an objection from the town?
Is that something that was expressed to the planning division?
It was a March 25 letter.
Do you have anything on that, Travis, from planning? Because that would have been earlier.
Yeah. The town of Haverhill submitted a letter, as they usually do, in objecting because they do not want Belvedere to ever be widened beyond four lane. That was the reason.
Right. But is there a nexus? I mean, it's 400 and something trips added on.
The planning division usually receives a letter from the town of Haverhill every time there's a zoning application in their area.
Okay.
And it's for the reason for the Belvedere Road.
Okay, so it's a standing objection. Okay, thank you.
Could we modify, Wendy, the... This, your objection to the balconies and put in if the applicant agrees to put in the first-level patios and then cut in the doors for those windows?
I think what we could do between now and B C C, we can meet with them to come up with some alternatives if the 40% has to come down, or they... Let's... We can meet and come up with some alternatives to that.
That works for us, yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
So in essence, then, when we make a motion here, we have put something to work out the balcony issues?
No, I think it's just the same motion, because we're recommending 40% with the acknowledgement that staff is going to work that out before now and the... Before the B C C.
Okay, well, then we don't have to do that.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
A question, the text amendments, they were transmitted. Were there any modifications to the text amendments?
Not since they were transmitted.
I'm saying they were transmitted the way they were and with no... With no modifications. And also, the process for the permit for the mural. Can you just review what you're going to do about that?
At the time of building... Well, it would be after building permits are done prior to C O, we would have to... We would want to have the mural commissioned and... I would like to talk to my client about that, to see what the timing is on the establishment of the mural, whether they want it to be at the time of C O or maybe shortly thereafter, within a short time window, because that is part of the architectural review.
Yeah, can staff explain how that process of the...
Well, I don't believe we have a condition of approval for the mural, and without one, there might not be a mural. So I think when we talk with the applicant about the balconies, we can talk about a condition of approval for a mural. We certainly don't want to lock them into a particular pattern and shade of colors. Neither them nor us will, you know. But I would imagine it's part of the final... You know, the mural's not going to go up until the building's ready to occupy and all the other improvements are done. But if, you know, I think we need a condition of approval, since it's part of the presentation, that there is some sort. Because without that, if you saw the picture, there was pretty much no architectural features on facing Haverhill. And it does look very nice. I mean, I will say, and I think I need to take this opportunity to tell you what a challenge this property has been. It's extremely high density, and it has a place of worship on the first floor. Zoning was extremely concerned about the place of worship on the first floor, because we know how often we deal with conflicts between non-residential uses and residential uses. But the applicant worked very closely with building and fire and the place of worship, and crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is, and here we are. We were also concerned with the reduction in parking, the loss of 37 parking spaces. Now, our former county administrator was extremely concerned about property management companies that were parasitic against some of the tenants and would tow vehicles on the folks that could least afford to get the boot off their car or to retrieve their car from the tow yard. So she was extremely concerned. So that's why with the new parking waiver, we established a parking management plan. And again, the applicant has worked very closely with staff to try to provide the confidence that the Board of County Commissioners is looking for in assuring and also, you know, some of the commissioners have commented as well about, you know, the towing practices. We want the... This property to ensure that there is adequate parking for the residents that do want to have a car and that there aren't any parasitic towing practices. And we think we're there, but it has been a long challenge. We look forward to the conclusion of this project, since it's been in for so long. But there's a lot of changes. You know, you saw there's a text amendment to the plan. There was the... They're the first to use the parking waiver reduction that wasn't put in for this project, but the timing coincided. And it also has the future land use amendment. You know, it is new, it is different, it is higher intensity and density, and it has that mixed place of worship component. But, you know, we think we're there. We're just talking about the architecture and see where we go from here.
So do we need to add that mural to this motion? No?
No.
You'll do it to the commissions? And also, I have just one question to the chair. Are there any public comment cards?
No comment cards. And I think we're ready for a motion on 9A.
To a class A conditional use request to allow the transfer of development rights in excess of two units per acre on 3.37 acres. Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? The motion passes?
Type-two waiver request to allow the affordability of housing parking waiver to reduce required parking on 3.37 acres. Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just to be clear, those are recommendations, not approvals.
Oh, okay, it says approval here.
Recommend approval.
Recommend approval.
Recommend approval.
A second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion, any opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you all very much.
That's the end of the regular agenda. Any... Any comments from... No one.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor, aye. Thank you.
Can you imagine somebody objecting to adjourn?
It took forever to come in.